Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty, present. Alderman Bevin.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Federico.
Here.
Alderman Fowler.
Here.
Alderman Haley.
Here.
Alderman Hype.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Mo Renin.
Here.
Alderman Pacelli.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
All are present.
All is present. We do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are strictly limited to the legislative functions of the Board of Aldermen. Please use every effort to limit public speaking to the permissible business of the Board of Aldermen. The time granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address this board. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. You mind knocking that off?
No problem, Mr. Chairman.
In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Please keep in mind that the structure of our meeting does not allow for a two-way dialogue during public comment or to answer any of your questions. Residents can contact their district aldermen by phone or email regarding any issue or concerns. We welcome and appreciate your comments and concerns regarding the city business, and all will be taken into consideration. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record for the secretary. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Loftus. I live at 56 Wilbar Avenue in Milford, Connecticut. Personally, I'd like to congratulate everybody who's either re-elected or elected for the first time. You have my admiration for doing a tough job. I was just listening to your opening remarks, Mr. Vitro, about, you know, speaking for three minutes, being a city resident, refraining from derogatory comments and personal attacks. And, you know, you probably have said that 10,000 times since you've been behind the microphone, and you probably hear those words in your sleep. As I'm sitting here at this microphone, I kind of hesitated to come here tonight because last weekend, or last meeting, I listened to the comments that we all heard with the derogatory comments towards certain aldermen of the words Nazi, Nazi bootlickers, racist, bigot, homophobe. Every word in the book was thrown at them. I felt bad for the aldermen. I heard some of the aldermen try to defend themselves, but I didn't hear the leadership of this board, or any other majority party, try to stop the person from speaking. Now, granted, First Amendment right, I believe in everyone's right to free speech, and I would defend to the death their right to speak, but you own those words. Those words are yours forever, and you need to be responsible for those words. I had hoped that somebody would have stood up. I was watching this at home, and I said, "Phil, why aren't you saying something? Why don't you shut that microphone off?" Now, granted, I want everyone to have a voice, and, you know, Ms. Nadine, I think Patowicz was her name, she has a right to say that, those words. Absolutely has a right to say it. But there's rules on this microphone tonight that you can't say those words, and somebody should have spoken up and shut that down, or asked her to tone it down a little bit. I thought it was inappropriate. I'm a great student of World War II, and I studied in college, and I still study to this day, and I could lecture you for hours on what is a Nazi. And I think Ms. Patowicz needs to take a trip to Europe and visit places like Auschwitz, Bolkensvall, and Treblinka to really understand what a Nazi atrocity is compared to aldermen who are sitting up here for no money at all doing the city's work. And I really think that somebody on this board, or Ms. Patowicz, should give an apology to the people who this was directed towards, and I, as a Milford citizen, apologize as a citizen to everybody who was offended that evening. I'm just so upset about it, and I'm very distraught. Again, not so much that this person said these things. I'm distraught that this board did not stand up and adhere to the rules. And you just read. You've read those rules 10,000 times. You'd either have to back up those rules, or don't have them at all, and when you say anything they want. I know Ms. Patowicz is a member of the Democrat Town Committee, and it kind of reeks a little bit of, well, she can say, because we know her, but you can't do that. You can't have rules for thee, but not for me. So, again, people come up to this podium and speaking, their mind and exercise in the First Amendment right to free speech is fantastic. One of the biggest fears people have is public speaking. The second fear is death, which I find interesting, because if you go to a funeral, you're better off in the casket than you are giving the eulogy. But I would hope in the future that this board really adheres to those rules for everybody. My favorite word is moron. I would never come up to this podium and call anybody in this board a moron. I've been on these seats. I've left meetings. I've had people say horrible things to me. I've had headlights put on in my car. I've had nasty phone calls to my house. I took it. It is what it is. But I'm going to observe those comments in front of this podium. You have an obligation to stand behind those rules for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. Carmina Hirsch, 484 Burnt Plains Road, Milford.
Aton Hirsch, 484 Burnt Plains Road, Milford.
Good evening, Chairman Vitro, members of the board, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Clerk Smith, and all city staff. We stand before you this evening to express our thanks to all of you for your service. Not many of the Milford residents know that people who put themselves to be elected or appointed to various town boards and commissions are unpaid volunteers who spend a significant amount of time and hours every month in the service of our community. We are grateful. Tonight, I'd like to recognize esteemed Alderwoman Ellen Dr., Ellen Beatty, who is rounding out her many years of service on this board. I first met Ellen nearly a decade ago when helping to assist her candidacy for state representative, and since that time, I have witnessed her lead with honor, integrity, respect, always listening to the needs of her constituents. I am particularly thankful to Ellen for introducing me to Boys and Girls Village, which serves the needs of children and families in our community through several programs, and the Charles Hayden School. It has been an honor to serve with you, Ellen, on this board for the last couple of years, and to know you, frankly. You have given of yourself to aid in the need of others for so many years. You are an inspiration to me and to so many. Thank you for all you do.
Ellen, you've always been there for those who need your assistance, your guidance, your wisdom. I personally sought your advice last year during my campaign for state representative, and I thank you for all you did for me during that time. The public has also benefited from your insight on many topics in your column in the Milford Orange Times. As you are completing your term on the Board of Aldermen, we wish to present you with a modest token of our appreciation and thanks. This wishes to you, to Ed, and your entire family this holiday season. Chairman Vitro, may we, my wife and I, approach to bestow these flowers on Dr. Beatty.
Thank you.
I wish my mother were here. She would believe every single word. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and that was a complete surprise.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janet Rivers. I live at 159 Broadway in the Wildemere Beach area. I'm here to ask that we need to do something about short-term rentals. I have to tell you, and I'm not going to go into detail, but the first week of October, next to me, and if you're familiar with that section of Broadway, it's a house, a driveway, a house. So, we're connected. And this particular house was a problem from a long time. But I look back, and some of the things I was worried about seem rather quaint now. We had an individual come in the first week of October, clearly in crisis. I don't know what it was, whether it was mental health or drugs, but he was there for one solid week, and I had no recourse. He was banging on my door with a mag flashlight. I have a glass front door. He was banging on my back door. He was perched on my platform for my air conditioning. And here is the rub. I didn't feel that I had anyone to call other than the Milford Police, who, by the way, were phenomenal. The situation got so bad, they had to post a cruiser two doors down from my house. I contacted the property management company, who is located in Kansas. It is a farmer who does this side hustle. The owner lives on the West Coast. The farmer rents from the owner. The farmer then turns it around and sublets it out to Airbnb. There was no one to call. There was no one local. He has no one here for, you know, a local maintenance. I called Airbnb, as did my neighbors, and they told their support ambassador, told us that there was nothing they could do. The police were phenomenal. They came maybe eight times. This gentleman was roaming through the neighborhoods. He was banging on doors. He was, four in the morning, screaming, standing on the front porch. I had no recourse. I had no one to call, who was directly, you know, in charge of this home. I'm asking if we can please set up some kind of committee to set up some ordinances that will help, help with, like, this is like the Wild West. This is an industry, hotel industry, an unregulated business, all these short-term rentals. And as a neighbor, you have no recourse. So I'm asking for consideration that maybe we set up a committee between the government, the community. I will be glad to come and help, because I can't sit still anymore. The good news is that the owner has now flipped it and is going to be putting it into a long-term rental. But I know other people have had issues too, so please, I'm asking for your consideration to strengthen the ordinances in this town so the people who live here can maintain the fabric of our neighborhoods, and that's what makes Milford great, are the neighborhood. Wildemere Beach, the people that I barely knew were coming to see me, asking me if I was okay. That's what Milford is, and I've only been here five and a half years, and I already feel a part of this community, and they have been phenomenal. So I'm asking again for your consideration. Can we please strengthen the ordinance in this town so we can have some peace in our neighborhoods? Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Felicia Shashinka, and I am the president of the Wildemere Beach Association. You've heard about the growing concerns around short-term rentals. This issue may not directly affect everyone, but I'd like to ask you to imagine what it is like for those who live next to, across the street from one of these rentals, where every weekend brings in a new group of guests, more cars, more noise, more trash, and unfortunately, a growing sense that our neighborhoods are less safe and less stable. To be clear, this is not about responsible homeowners who occasionally rent out their property. The real concern lies with frequent short-term rentals that operate more like businesses than homes, changing the very nature of our residential neighborhoods. We're asking the city to take a closer look at this issue and explore ordinances that strike a fair, reasonable balance, one that allows Milford to remain a welcoming place for visitors, also protecting the quality of life for the residents. The Wildemere Beach Association has formed a committee focused on this issue, and we're eager to collaborate with city leaders, other beach associations, and residents to identify solutions that will work for everyone. We welcome the creation of a city-led task force, or working group, that includes representatives from beach associations, planning and zoning, and law enforcement to review best practices and recommended regulations of these rentals. We love this city, and we want to see Milford to continue to thrive as both a vibrant, welcoming destination, and a safe, stable community for people who call it home. Thank you for your time and your ongoing commitment as elected officials to addressing these important issues. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for attending all of our meetings and getting a lot of the balls rolling. Appreciate it.
Evening all. My name is Charles Matulbano. I live at 30 Revere Place in Milford. I want to thank everyone for your service. I've had the privilege of calling Dr. Ellen Russell Beatty a friend for decades. So many, in fact, that I remember when amid her many professional commitments, she was also a devoted soccer mom. Ellen has served the people of Milford with unwavering honesty and integrity. Her commitment to understanding every issue thoroughly, exhaustively, and with intellectual rigor has always impressed me. When she asks questions, they are respectful, incisive, and meticulously detailed. No detail is too small, no nuance too subtle, to escape her attention. She is a formidable ally and a tenacious opponent, always principled, always prepared, and like all great teachers, Ellen leaves you both enlightened and eager to learn more. After every conversation with her, I've found myself wanting two things: a deeper dive and a drink. I treasure our friendship, and I thank you, Ellen, for your extraordinary service to our community. Thank you.
Peggy Kearney, 23 Mountain View Drive in Milford. I'm also here this evening to pay tribute to my good friend and Fifth District Alder, Dr. Ellen Beatty. Ten years ago, Ellen came to her First District meeting at my house, and I knew right away that she was going to end up in one of those 10 seats. Not only is she one of the nicest, most generous people I know, but she is absolutely one of the smartest people on the planet. She represented both the First and Fifth Districts over the 10 years' career, and she did it with grace, and she did it with honesty. Whenever there was a touchy subject, she did her research and came prepared to defend her vote. She always put Milford and her constituents first. I think I can speak for all of the people in Milford when I send a huge thank you to Ellen and wish her the best as she moves on to other projects near and dear to her heart, which include her husband, Ed, and her dog, Sully. Thank you.
Good evening. It's been about a decade since I met Dr. Beatty, and you have actually served as one of my biggest role models here, as a woman, as a politician, as someone who speaks for our community, so I'm incredibly proud to know you and proud to say this. Ellen's style has been marked by integrity and hard work. She frequently reminds us that listening is essential, that good governing means studying the facts, weighing competing interests, and making decisions for the long-term benefit of our community. Ellen, we're grateful for the legacy that you leave behind, not only in specific policies and budget outcomes, but in the culture of the public service that you have helped sustain. Measured, thoughtful, committed to our common good. Your leadership has made our city stronger, our processes more transparent, and our community more resilient. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Parente, 23 Randolph Farm Road, Milford.
I'm Matt Arciolo at 33 Railroad Avenue in Milford.
Okay, well, speak up. Alder Beatty, tonight marks your final meeting, and I just have to say, it was a true pleasure to serve with you on the board for four years. You were so gracious to me at my first meeting when I first met you. You made me feel welcome and included. I'll never forget that. It did not take me long to realize just how brilliant and talented you are. I find that your grasp of municipal policy is just exceptional, and I learned by just observing you and listening to you as you dissected policy issues and you crafted solutions for all of us. You're also very humble. I don't know how many people in this room know that you have both a master's degree and a PhD from an esteemed Ivy League institution. Recently, I've been in touch with one of your former colleagues and friends from your university days, and Matt is going to read something that she wanted to know about you this evening.
Hi, I'm Matt, and I'll be playing the role of this colleague. But first, actually, I would like to take a moment to congratulate this board on two years of wonderful work. Congratulations to everybody who was re-elected, and thank you for your tireless service. I know how difficult and hard this job is, and I want to thank you all for the good work you put in. Now, here's a line from a colleague of Dr. Beatty's. "Dr. Beatty's public service has been strengthened by her distinguished professional background. Before her tenure in city government, she served as a senior-level university administrator, managing a multimillion-dollar budget and overseeing faculty and curriculum at one of the finest state universities. Her impressive career also includes service as a full professor of nursing and dean of two university schools, where she fostered excellence in education, leadership, and ethical practice. Dr. Beatty's devotion to learning and civic engagement also enriches Milford and their surrounding regions by her frequent thoughtful essays in the Milford Orange Times on many local, national, and global issues that impact so many of our daily lives." Thank you. Yeah, no, I did want to just take a moment to... I have no prepared remarks, so I'm not going to be as concise or charming as these other fine folks who came up here, but I did want to voice my absolute appreciation for all of the hard work you've done. It was my absolute pleasure to serve with you for four years. You were one of the first people to approach me when I agreed to run for alder, and I do want to give you credit because the fine work you did paved the way for people like me in the first to join, and I affectionately called you mom every time you brought us candies, or napkins, or you made sure everybody was hydrated at all times. You wanted to make sure we had enough. But I think you're a voice that's going to be sorely missed on this board, and I was very grateful to have known you and worked with you for as long as I did. Thank you very much, Ellen.
Okay, so, let me find my place here. So, Alder Beatty, Ellen, your education, your professional background, and your sharp policy mind have made you an incredible asset to this board and to all of Milford. Every resident is so lucky to have had you serve in this capacity. I hope that the current board members and new, future board members will reach out to you for your sage advice, your knowledge, and your wisdom. They will be better for it. And so, thank you for everything, especially, though, I thank you for being such a lovely and wonderful friend to me. You've been just... I just so enjoy our friendship, and I look forward to our continued lengthy conversations about every possible subject under the sun. So, you're just the best. Thank you so much.
Dominic Cotton, 60 Corona Drive. I guess before I get to Ellen, who's a close friend, I just wanted to thank the other side, many people that I've had long discussions with over a multitude of years. Scott Marlowe, I deeply appreciate the conversations, your service for here for so many years. Jason, I've been to one of your public events, and I appreciate the discussions. Ray, although we might not agree on policy a lot of times, I know you've always been open to discussion. And certainly, Mayor Genetazio, I appreciate the enthusiasm that you brought to this office and how much you appreciate Milford, and how much everybody who serves on this board really wants the best for Milford. Although we might not agree on policy all the time, we all agree that we have the heart to want to serve and to want to do the best for our fellow citizens. This is an unpaid board. You spend a lot of time involved in the community, and, you know, we're at the end of our two-year cycle, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the service that you bring, and I think that that's extremely important from all of you. And to my good friend Ellen, Ellen, who I know I forced you to run for the 119th by turning in your paperwork before you completely agreed to, like, run, and who I know I helped to try to facilitate. to try to facilitate you coming from the 1st to the 5th district. You've been a close friend for well over a decade, and I know your family very well and your sons, and I can't express how much I appreciate not just your friendship, but what you've always been willing to put yourself out for, for this city. So, for that, I thank you personally, and for all those that are not going to be returning next time around, I thank you as well, because your service means a lot to our community. So, thank you.
My name is Toni Lombardi. I live at 195 Meadowside Road. While I'll be joining this board soon myself, I wanted to take a moment to recognize those who are concluding their time in service to our city. Public service isn't easy. It means long nights, often away from your families, tough conversations, and unfortunately, a lot more criticism than credit. To everyone finishing your time on the board, and to Mayor Genetazio, thank you for the work you've done for Milford and for the example you've set to those of us stepping in next. I want to especially recognize Dr. Ellen Beatty. Ellen has given 10 years to the Board of Aldermen, leading with both courage and compassion. She's been a steady voice of reason, a trusted colleague to those who have served beside her, and a role model for those of us who hope to follow in her footsteps. She's shown what leadership can look like when it's rooted in fairness, preparation, and heart. She's been a trailblazer for women in Milford government and an example of what it means to serve with integrity. While I'm sad that I won't have the chance to serve beside you, I am deeply grateful for the path that you have helped pave. Your leadership has already shaped the tone and expectations for what service on this board should look like. I've learned from watching how you've handled tough issues, how you've led with both strength and kindness, and how you've always kept the people at Milford at the center of every decision you make. Even without serving together, you've set an example that I'll carry with me as I begin my own term soon. You've been one of my biggest role models, and thank you so much for your service and for showing that leadership isn't about power, but it's about people. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board can do so at this time? Next item on the agenda is the consideration of minutes. Alderman Paselli.
Consideration of minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on October
Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, item number four, consideration of minutes of this special organizational meeting, there isn't none. Under Chairman's report, I'd like to adjust the audience and my fellow members of the board. I just want to say that it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your chairman for the last two years, working with all of you. I know it hasn't been easy at times, long hours, and every one of you deserve a round of applause for everything you have done for the city and for the residents of Milford, and I'm looking forward to serving another two years with all of you. I wanted to thank each member that is going to be leaving after this evening. Scott Marlowe, Jason Jenkins, Ray Vitale, Ellen Beatty, and of course, Matt Arciaolo and Ward Willis left us a couple of months back. I appreciated all your hard work and working with all of us together, making it a great board. That's all I have. Mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the members of the board, and good evening to those that are here tonight. I'd like to announce the Veterans Day Parade this Sunday, November 9th. It'll step off at 2:00 p.m., and also the wreath laying ceremony will be held on Tuesday, November 11th, beginning at 10:45 a.m. in front of City Hall. So, I would encourage any of you that could attend, and any new elected members as well, these two veterans events. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission for their continued dedication to honoring our veterans. Also, I'd like to announce to you, I've mentioned this, I think, previously, the Stowe Barn. I'm proud to announce that Wednesday morning, the Stowe Barn has been officially recognized as a historic property in the state of Connecticut. This designation opens the door to grant funding opportunities that will support the rehabilitation of the barn and help restore it as a valuable community asset, and that's been a long time coming. A special thank you to Susan Patrick and the Walnut Beach Association for their unwavering commitment to this project and to the Walnut Beach community. This is a great city asset, and I look forward to this opportunity for the city to assume grants, realize grants, and restore it and use it and put it to public use. So, that's great news. And also, I'd ask your consideration for items 8A, which is the GPS contract. Rob Harrigan is here to represent the Department of Public Works if you have any questions, and also your consideration for item 8B, the Axon contract. Our police chief, Keith Mello, is here to answer any questions in regards to the body camera system. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. There isn't any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business, item number eight. Alderman Paselli.
Agenda item 8A, Board of Aldermen approval is requested for the attached agreement between the city of Milford and Samsara, and to authorize the mayor, public works director, and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said agreement.
Second the motion. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Healy.
Yes, I believe the mayor indicated that Rob Harrigan is here. He's the assistant director newly appointed for Public Works, so he could come forward and talk about this GPS system, what we currently have, and the scope of this particular contract, and what the cost-benefit analysis will be.
Thank you. Through the chairman to Alderman Healy. Yes, currently, we have Geotab, which is a rudimentary system. There's no cameras. It takes a while to report. There's no driver alerts, and as well, it doesn't seamlessly integrate with our garage software, even though it is more expensive. With these added features, it's going to cut down on time with the supervisor in the garage having to manually log all the data, as well as the data currently is sometimes incorrect. So, with that, there's...sometimes we're bringing in a truck that doesn't need to be serviced and is being serviced. The driver alerts will tell the driver that it's rolling through a stop sign, whether it's picking up a phone, it's being inintensive. It'll also allow us to have all the cameras have cloud-based storage, which right now they're all on SD cards, so it requires the supervisor to go out there, format it, so we'll cut down on time on that, and it just reduces liability and mitigates, you know, the city's risk and public's worst risk.
Can you tell me the aggregate value of this contract? It's a five-year contract. Looking at this, again, the existing contract that you have is with T-Mobile, and that is expiring, and what's the effective date of that expiration?
I couldn't speak to the exact date that expires, but I can give you that information.
So, this particular contract, then, with Samsara, there's no RFP because this particular contract is on from the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, DAS. This is an approved contract, and you're piggybacking onto that in order to secure this particular contract with the new vendor?
That is correct, yes. We got this through Sourcewell, which on the state contract. Doing our due diligence, though, we also reached out to four or five other municipalities throughout the state of Connecticut, and most of them were actually switching over to Samsara, leaving Verizon, so we figured this would be the best fit for Milford Public Works.
So, we're talking about an average expenditure of almost $55,000 a year for the life of this five-year contract. The way the contract is structured, there is a first-year payment. The aggregate value of the first two years is $88,000 that will be expensed. So, looking at that, I'm trying to, you know, garner what the benefit will be. So, when you talk about this being a GPS system that is much more enhanced than what we currently have with T-Mobile, the difference is going to be in the reporting capabilities of the new system in terms of being able to pull up information, that does all the maintenance, and what is the total number of vehicles we're talking about?
The total vehicles that we're looking to get devices on would be approximately 164. That doesn't include all the pieces of equipment we have at Public Works, but we currently have about 128 devices. That, you know, fluctuates depending on if vehicles are up or down, if we're getting rid of vehicles or purchasing vehicles. Besides the reporting, I think one of the biggest things to look at is just the integration with the garage software. With this technology, this will eliminate mistakes, eliminate incorrect entries, as well as obviously get accurate miles, hours, and diagnostics. It has also capability of integrating with the PTO system, so also know when the PTO is running and not running. And I think the other thing to look at is, it's going to help our supervisors, all supervisors, supervise better instead of not knowing what the guys are doing on the road in terms of, you know, phones, rolling through stop signs, speeding. We'll get immediate alerts on our cellphones when these things are occurring, and they also have driver alerts, so it'll be able to alert the driver that they're speeding, they don't have their seatbelt on, they're using the phone, they're distracted, driving. So, those are all benefits that, you know, we're hoping to, you know, be able to use.
Do we have a negative accident history? I mean, we don't have cameras currently. You're talking about placing cameras on the vehicles, so from a civil liability standpoint, what's the accident history on the total number of Public Works vehicles, do you know, in the last three years?
I do not have that, those numbers on me. I do know from supervising the solid waste department, the cameras have helped with liability standpoint, because we're able to pull that data and pull it, whether it's interactions with pedestrians or residents, or whether it's, you know, potential accidents or things that are occurring on the road, we have used it in those cases.
Are we going to have a conflict with the new contract coming on and the old vendor? So, we need to know the expiration date of the existing contract and when this contract would take effect, and it's my understanding additionally that this contract, if it's not funded, there is, under the contract language, some information about if there's no appropriation after the first year of the contract, that this contract could be mitigated at that point. Is it your belief the contract could be canceled?
That is correct. That was one of the selling points when they originally came into Public Works, that if this contract doesn't get funded through the budget, then we do have an out, so we were not tied to the contract, I believe.
From Mr. Chairman to the city attorney, have you looked at this contract and made that determination that this contract could be voided easily at the conclusion of the first year?
Mr. Chair, through Alderman Healy, yes, that's correct. Easily is a relative term, but it's, we can terminate it for convenience or if it's not funded. There's no appropriation for it. We are obviously not going to be held to the contract price. That was the negotiated term.
Once again, myself, I'm just, as the chairman of the Public Works Committee, and this was tabled at the last session, I asked for additional detail on this particular matter, trying to understand the cost-benefit, you know, for the Public Works Department, and that's where we sit. So, if we have an opportunity to conclude, which we don't know right now when the former contract expires, and entering into this, I would assume we're not entering into a contract and have a duplication of service. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Chairman Vito, through Mr. Harrigan. I'm going to accept the fact that you and your department and the commission have done their due diligence and determined this is a better service than what you have now. Price-wise, however, you know, I see there's a price for each year, there's a total contract value, looks like there may even be a discount included here. Do you know, or can you refer me to somebody who might know the difference between the cost of the old service and the new service, understanding it's an enhanced and better product? Do we have an idea annually about how much more the new service is?
Yes, it's approximately about $30,000 a year that we spend on that service now. Obviously, month-to-month, it may change depending on how many devices we have active at that present time.
Okay, thank you. So, the increase would be maybe $25,000 or so over the course of each year?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, and is there a...this is going to be going into effect, we think, very shortly, or is this being signed now for something that may go into effect six months or a year from now?
We would be hoping, once we find out when the other contract ends, or if, once we can get out the other contract, then we would be moving forward with this contract.
Okay, and one last question. Have we given thought to how this will be funded? And we're just wondering, I presume, because a component, at least a portion of this, would have been funded by virtue of the amount needed for the old service?
Correct.
The old contract, this one will be a little bit more, was that included in the most recent budget, or is this going to be extra funds that'll need to be located to cover the difference?
No, in this current budget cycle coming up, we did include this as an increase in our GPS line.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I hear you say before that this did not go out to RFP? Did I hear that correctly?
That would be correct.
And why did it not go out to RFP?
We used the state contract bid to see, obviously, what, you know, GPS systems are on there, and then doing our due diligence, we reached out to a few other vendors in trying to get prices and see what capabilities they have.
What is the state contract bid? Is that what you said it is, state contract bid?
Yes, we use Sourcewell, which would be a state contract, which has vendors on it that are already approved.
And therefore, you didn't need to go out to RFP? My question really is, if we're going to spend $273,000 on this contract, why didn't it go out to RFP?
Mr. Chair, maybe I could answer that question for Mr. Harrigan. So, by state statute, in terms of procurement, we are allowed to avail ourselves of the state contract bid, which goes through the competitive bidding process. So, as opposed to municipalities going through the cost and expense of going out for their own, you have the benefit of the buying power of the state going through the bid process, and they qualify responsive vendors. So... vendors. So it's like unit pricing, if you will. So SamSara is part of that. So we are compliant with the law and went through a bid process, just not on our own. I hope that answers your question, Alderman Smith.
Well, sort of. I mean, so this is an exception to, I remember in certain other contexts, we've talked about the fact that when contracts, when the city has contracts, they must go out to RFP. This is an exception to that?
No, it's a competitive bid process. The city didn't issue its own request for proposals. It's part of the state's request for proposals for such services. So it's not an exception. It's just another path for competitive bidding.
Well, all right. Competitive bid versus an RFP process. I think we're going to disagree on this. It sounds to me more like an exception. I think contracts should go out to RFP. When the municipality is putting them, using the State of Connecticut and picking their preferred vendors or whatever's going on here, I don't think is the right process. I really, you know, there's a lot of exceptions to going out to RFP, and I don't think this should be one of them. But I have some questions on the underlying contract as well, if I could. I don't know too much about this, but what are vehicle telematics?
Vehicle telematics would be mileage, hours, and diagnostics. So if there's like an engine light that comes on, that'd be a diagnostic that the software would be able to pick up.
And what does that do for the city or for the department?
It would be, help us to quickly understand that there's a problem with the vehicle so the garage can bring it in, so there's not more damage caused to the vehicle.
And then I, this is probably more for the city attorney. I had a discussion with the city attorney about this, if I could switch over to it. There's a section in here that says confidentiality. And it says that the terms of the order form and this whole transaction are supposed to be kept in strict confidence. And here we are talking about it in the public arena. Are we not violating our agreement as we debate this tonight?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Smith. No, I don't believe so. The contract that you're referring to is the general terms and conditions contract for SamSara. They are entering in contracts. We've had discussions. The order form is what controls. And they understand that, obviously, this is a public document upon approval and subject of all the public records. In terms of pricing, things like that, that would be confidential in its negotiation phase. So I'm confident that, no, this discussion is not in violation. I understand that the terms and conditions, general form, may suggest that, but that is not the case.
Now, if they, but if they know that this is a public body and we're going to be debating this in public, why have this confidentiality provision in here at all? Why bother?
I can't answer that question. It's a fair question, but I can't answer why they have it. Again, it's their boilerplate agreement. The order form made certain changes, obviously, that we requested, but they reflect any of the changes in the order form and not in their template terms and conditions.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, pick up on that. In the body of the document itself, it says that SamSara can modify the terms at any time in their sole discretion. And I know we talked about that earlier. It's your belief that that term is superseded by a different term?
That term is superseded. So as we discussed prior to the meeting, if SamSara modified the price, we have a right in order form to terminate the agreement because contract is contingent upon the appropriate appropriations, which is set forth in the cost overview of the approximately, you know, just shy of $55,000 per year.
Well, putting aside the price, I mean, what about the other terms of the agreement? It says that they can modify any of the terms at any time, not just the price, but any other term.
And I believe if we don't accept them, we have the right to terminate the contract.
All right. And back to the deputy director here. It says here that they have the right to audit a customer's usage. I'm always concerned when outside folks have the right to audit city activities. What do they mean here when they have the right to audit customers' usage? What is it, they're a software company or something, right? What is it that they're auditing?
I could find out for you. I couldn't speak to that right now.
And there's a, in paragraph six, it says that the city is responsible for the installation of the hardware and its ongoing maintenance. Do we have the capacity to install whatever hardware they're going to be giving us and maintaining it on an ongoing basis?
I believe so. That's what we do at this present time with the current software or the current GPS.
There's a section in here that says that, it's section eight, that it requires the city to pay by wire transfer. And then it says that the city has to pay an additional 3% for all wire transfers. And maybe this is a better question for the city attorney, but, I mean, that just strikes me as a way that they're just kind of, doesn't it strike you that they're kind of unilaterally raising the cost of the whole thing by 3%? The city attorney?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if that was a rhetorical question.
No, no, it's a real, I mean, the contract says here that the customer's payment, unless otherwise set forth in the applicable order form, fees are payable by wire transfer. And it says all transfers are subject to a processing fee of up to 3%. So it just, it sounds to me like they're requiring wire transfers and then charging us 3% for wire transfers. All right. I think for the deputy director here, in section 10, it says the customer data is accessible via licensed SamSara software, period. But it doesn't say by whom. Do you know who is going to have access to the customer data?
From the city side, it would be all the approved supervisors.
Is there anybody besides the city that's going to have access to this customer data?
I could find out for you. I don't know at this present time.
All right. Yes, please. Please do look at that, because then the next sentence says that the customer hereby grants to SamSara a non-exclusive, transferable, worldwide, royalty-free license to use, copy, modify, and create derivative works based upon, display, and otherwise distribute the customer data. I'm not sure, what is, again, what is the customer data?
The customer data would be miles driven, speed, the telematics, hours, miles, diagnostics.
And we're granting them the right to transfer it worldwide? Is that really needed? I mean, why are we doing that? Chairman Vito. Alderman Sully?
If I may, through you to Alderman Smith. In each of the last three items that you've mentioned, there's a sentence or a phrase right after that that answers the question in a manner that would probably be satisfactory to most. For instance, in section 8.1, where you're picking on the 3% fee, I note that there's an opportunity to not pay a fee if you set up payment in a certain method. And then in 10.1, I notice that the data that you were questioning him on will be kept confidential. And then when they talk about taking that data and using it, it will be used in an anonymous and aggregated way. And it almost seems as if the questions being asked are being asked in a manner where you may already know the answer, but to badger the individual you're speaking to. So I just would ask that you please ask questions, but...
Alderman Sully, you want to know something? I'm going to take offense to that, badgering somebody. To tell you the truth, I have talked to the department head about this, and that 3% thing is, in fact, in there just like that. And they're going to pay that. And that sentence about the use of the customer data, there's a period right there. I'm not badgering anybody. I'm asking questions because I don't understand. I don't like the way the contract reads, and I'm having an opportunity for the first time to ask somebody about it. No, I'm not badgering anybody. I happen to think this contract's got problems and isn't good for the city of Milford. And you're telling me I'm badgering people? Well, you're impugning my motives, and I don't think that's proper. And, Mr. Chairman, I wish you would stop him from doing it. If I can continue? Thank you. In the same vein, in section 12.1, it says the customer shall and hereby does irrevocably transfer and assign to SamSara all right title and interest it may have in the services to SamSara. And hereby, and SamSara hereby accepts such transfer, period. It says no ownership rights are conveyed to the customer under these terms, period. And maybe it's the city attorney as well with you, but they're saying we're not getting any ownership terms, and yet they're saying that we're transferring all the ownership that we have. How can that be?
I believe they're talking about the proprietary software of which we're going to obtain data. Again, I did draft the contract. We negotiated the order form. This is a standard term contract boilerplate that they have, which, by my account, I think at least eight other municipalities are currently using. We made efforts. I appreciate and respect your concerns with it. We noted them. We've gone through, I think, several meetings and calls requesting some changes. They were not accepting of them. I certainly respect your concerns. Just from the city's perspective, we did share concerns with the contract. We requested changes. The order form reflects the changes we were able to get.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to the city attorney, on the same lines, I think you and I talked earlier about the indemnification provisions that are in here. I understand that this may be their form contract. I may have gone through months of negotiation, and this may be the best that we've got for a product that the department obviously feels comfortable with and thinks is good for the city. But, you know, if we just have to live with the contract because that's the best we're going to get, that might be the answer.
In terms of, I hope I didn't interrupt you...
I started with indemnities and I wandered off, yeah.
The indemnity, the city does not have any indemnification obligations to SamSara, including the ones set forth in section 10.2. That change is reflected in the order form, to the extent the city is legally prohibited from taking on such obligations. The proposed language on page eight, I'm sorry. So the indemnification provisions in 10.2 that you found troubling have been removed in the order form.
What was I, the...
The indemnification provision in 10.2 has been removed in the order form.
Okay. Thank you.
So the city's obligation to indemnify SamSara has been removed.
Right. Now, as I recall it, this is, there was some dissatisfaction with the T-Mobile arrangement that the department earlier had?
Correct.
And we have a termination provision in here, so we can terminate this on fairly short order?
Correct. If it's not funded the following year in the budget, then we're able to get out of the contract.
Can we, can the city terminate it for any other reason, if any of these other things that we're talking about here happen? Or is it only if the funding fails?
I'd have to turn to the city attorney.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry. We can terminate if there's no appropriation or this term modification.
If there's a term modification, we can...
Yes, I indicated earlier.
All right. So here, now, this wouldn't be a term modification so much, but it says that they can freely assign these terms without restriction. I mean, just reading it and thinking about the T-Mobile thing, they could assign it back to T-Mobile.
Correct. But T-Mobile would have to provide the same level of service that we're obtaining. If SamSara became, was acquired by another vendor, that vendor would assume all the obligations to provide the service that we purchased. If they did provide those services, then we could terminate.
Then we could terminate.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your indulgence. I think that the RFP thing is bothersome. And I know that there are exceptions, or you can call them something other than exceptions, and I think that that's wrong. There are some other terms in here that I don't like, and I think that there may be fail-safe mechanisms built into this thing that will allow the city to get around it. The thing that I don't like about a lot of the contracts that come before this board is that the city has to bend to the contractor. And I've seen that a lot. Other contracts are very city-friendly. And from my perspective, the city has the leverage. Everybody wants our business. And I don't see, I am not comfortable with the city having to take standard contracts from other entities. So because of the lack of RFP and some of these other terms in here, I'm going to be voting no on this because I, not because I don't think the product is good or that the pricing isn't good, but by the process that we got here, the lack of RFP and some of these other terms that feel like the city is, the city is the lower of the two parties here, and we're asking them for some kind of favor. It's just a sense of it that I get from this, and I'm not comfortable with it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your intelligence, and to the deputy chairman and director. Alderman Casey?
Thank you. Through you to the town, city attorney. As I understand, maybe, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but regarding the RFP, the state is a different track. It's not an exception, but it's a different process. It still involves competitive bidding, if I'm correct, if...
Yes, that's why, in the same way, the law changed where if a municipality went out to bid on something and we wanted an identical service, we could use that bid. The state contract list has the same mechanism. Some public entity has gone through a competitive bid process. That's the idea. And I can understand Alderman Smith's point about, he sees it as an exception to the traditional means of the city going out. I don't view it as an exception in terms of the word. An exception to a bidding process is an emergency bid, a sole provider, where there's no competitive solicitation process. That's how I view exception, but I understand what he's saying. It's not a traditional bid where we give it to Fred Biaka and he has a notice and publication. I think that's the distinction where we're coming from. But I just want to give an explanation as to why I don't view it as an exception, because it went through a competitive process to get to this pricing.
All right. So take me through the process. Like, I don't want to belabor the point more than necessary, but I just, I'm curious, I guess. So the state uses a competitive bid, and then if we, the municipality, wants to use a competitive bid, we're free to use, I guess, preferred vendors or a separate competitive bid? So...
As I understand it, and maybe Assistant Director Harrigan can explain, because I don't go onto the DAS Sourcewell website very often myself, but the Department of Administrative Services for the State of Connecticut has bids, processes, that... Services for the State of Connecticut has bids, processes that municipalities in the state can avail themselves for. And there is a multitude of dropdown boxes, whether it's Ask All, GPS monitoring systems for public works vehicles, find it, find vendors that have submitted proposals that are competitively bid, pre-qualified, and then municipalities can then avail themselves if they have a need and it matches what have, what's there.
Thank you. And I just want to, like, ask another question, like, and I, I, I think that's kind of out there, but like, but the D is like, is, a lot of sensitive information is, can control, like, you know, the, the driver activities, that lets know if you're putting on a seatbelt, and if you're speeding too much. And I assume that, you know, you looked into, like, any of this, like, programs valid to union contract? I'm sure you're saying no, but I just want to double check and say for record that it's not validating of, like, union contracts between the workers, that, you know, you, it's evading their privacy, or anything like that? Again...
No, I mean, I, I know that the folks to my left, Chief Mello, Deputy Chief Wyder, and Captain Sikorski, their cruisers have a host of data available. Our public works vehicles, right now, have a host of data available. I don't believe it's a change in working conditions at all, and, and it's simply, all of our cars, even your car, has a black box data. And, and I know school buses have it, things of that nature. So no, that, that wasn't a concern. I don't know if, maybe Mr. Harrigan can explain it. The public works employees that operate these vehicles, those concerns I know have been raised. A lot of the technology in terms of cameras are there. We have used cameras mostly to help us, a lot like body cameras, in terms of resident calls and says, "Hey, the public works director destroyed my totter. Can I get a new totter?" We can go back and look at the data and prove that, no, it wasn't a public works truck that did that. Here's the pickup.
Well, like, I, I just, I just don't want to belabor the point, but like, is like, say if somebody's speeding and vehicles, do they get, like, a rep慢, or like, it goes up to their record, and they can be fired eventually, or get suspended, or like, what happens if they find violating the, the protocols, I guess?
We have a progressive discipline, so it would be a consultation, you know, and then it would, it works way up from there, obviously depending on the, the level of act that was committed. I mean, right now, we do have, you know, speeding controls on it. We have a geo-fence in certain areas to make sure that if they're going back to the yard, if they're going to other places that aren't, you know, work-related, that we, we're made aware. So we're actively doing that right now as well, so, and we all, we've had cameras on the garbage trucks for the last decade since the side loaders have come in. There's five or six cameras on that right now that, you know, record sound as well.
Thank you both for your appreciated time. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Healy.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Assistant Director Harrigan. Have you discussed this with the IT department, with the manager, Adam Heller?
Yes, I have.
Is, is, okay, and has he made a review of this? Is there any interface, or is this a standalone system that doesn't interface with anything other that's on the, the city network?
Yes, to my understanding, that it doesn't interface with any other technology that's in the city. It would just be the, the garage software and the standalone.
And you have a recommendation from Manager Heller relative to this particular software system?
Yeah, during our discussion, we had talked, and he had seen that it met several of our needs. So he, you know, it, me, Cory, and Director Saley thought that it was best for public works, and, and he was behind us.
He doesn't have any security-related apprehensions about the interface or data?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
Additionally, I, I know, back to, from you, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith, the Department of Administrative Services and state contracts, it is available for all municipalities to be able to utilize the state contract. It provides an incentive and cost savings for all municipalities to be able to review bids that are currently out there for goods and services that the State of Connecticut also uses, and, and at a magnified number, obviously, for their statewide fleet systems and, and services. So it is advantageous for municipality to obviously take a look at that, and then it mitigates them with the cost and time to have to go out to bid individually for specific items. So that's just in a, in a general sense to that. And I would ask for a recess, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion?
I'd ask for a five-minute recess.
Absolutely. We're understood, under discussion. Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Chairman Vitra. Through you to Assistant Director Harrigan. Have you had a running test on the Sam Sarah system?
Yes, currently, we've had it for approximately about four months, where we've put it in four different vehicles. One solid waste vehicle, one or two highway vehicles, and two other vehicles in other departments, so we have been using it.
And the results have been favorable?
Yes. We've been able to use the dual-facing camera to teach better driving habits, trying to avoid using, you know, phones in the vehicles. We've even put it in one supervisor's car, and they even noticed that they, you know, were picking up the phone and, and rolling through stop signs, so I think it's definitely helpful in that return. Using the platform, it's a lot user-friendly. We've been able to get great, great data out of it. The garage has been able to consistently get accurate... The garage has been able to consistently get accurate miles, hours and diagnostics. And so far, it's been, it's been a great help for those vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you to the Finance Director. It's my understanding at the first year of this contract, the funds will be covered under existing funding in the budget?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that is my understanding.
Thank you, I don't have any other questions, recommend moving a question if there are no other questions.
Alderman Pazzelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For this particular matter, I, to the board, I am going to be voting in favor of this today. There were a fair amount of questions asked today, but it sounds like it has been vetted, it has been tested, it was part of a bid process, even though it wasn't the city's bid process, it was part of the state process. There are outs, ability to terminate if this is not what we thought it was, and then it's not funded going forward, it's, we have an ability to terminate if the vendor unilaterally changes terms. So this seems to be a good, and it is funded at this point, so it seems to be, have been dealt with appropriately and I believe should be passed, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion?
If I could just make two points before, just to have clarity, I was able to talk to the Samara rep, and I know there was a question about the confidentiality clause, as well as the three percent, and she was able to clarify those two points of... The confidentiality clause essentially states that our pricing, the Samara pricing cannot be directly submitted to the direct competition, and then the three percent processing fee will not apply to the city as the city will go through the standard purchasing of check. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. So with no other discussion, we'll take it to a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy?
Yes.
Alderman Height?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Morennon?
Yes.
Alderman Pazzelli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale? Thirteen yes, one no.
The vote was thirteen yes and two no, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. One no, I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction. Alderman, Alderman Pazzelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Agenda Item 8B, Board of Alderman approval is requested for the attached agreement between the City of Milford and Axon Corporation, and to authorize the Mayor, Police Chief and City Attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Mello is here with some of his senior staff members, if he could come forward and just briefly explain the contract, thank you.
Certainly, good evening, everyone. I actually put together a short PowerPoint, there is a lot in there and it can be complicated, so I thought for your reference. What I'm looking, what I'm asking for this evening is to, the authority to sign this renewal, the renewal, this is from five years ago, you had renewed this, the renewal is automatic by the terms, but because there are significant increases, that it was important that I was here tonight. And the reason I'm asking to do this tonight, now this, you'll see it doesn't go into effect here until next July. There are certain economies that we can realize if we do this now, at the end of the business of the calendar year is to our advantage. There's also significant price increases in some of these Axon products, so I'd like to leverage that, sign this, and then understand that it doesn't go into effect until July 1st. This is a renewal of the previous five-year contract, last contract, Mayor Blake and you folks used ARPA funds to pay for that in one single bite. This is an annual contract, the term, it actually is different than what you have, I was able to negotiate down to just about 4.1 with 8.19 annually. You can see the terms, the total savings is 2.8 million or 5.50 a year. There's some additional savings, some of this before was not in the consolidated contract, it was à la carte. We've put everything in the consolidated contract, and that will realize $200,000 in savings because we, we need to replace our modems, we won't have line item for dash cameras in there any longer, it'll provide some connectivity, our interview rooms need to be replaced as well, because that contract expired as well, so this has all been consolidated into this one contract, and there are certain economies that go with that. I want to give you just a comparison, I won't mention the, the community, but the same contract that was signed early this year by a municipality of the same size was 4.8 million, and another contract was signed of a larger department for 7 million. Axon contracts are, there's 90 departments in the state, and I'm sure all 90 departments, or at least pretty close, have Axon contracts, but I just want to give you that as a comparison. What's in it? Body worn cameras. I want to pay attention to the asterisk because body worn cameras are required by law, it's mandated by state statute that we have those. It provides replacement of the current model of body worn cameras, including all the mounting devices, there are some new technologies, some new advancements that come with these products, that gives us two cycles, every two and a half years, we get a new product. It also provides something different this time, real-time translation, you know, we don't have a lot of folks that can translate, we have some Spanish speakers, but that's about it. We normally have to rely on calling other departments and looking for somebody to translate. It's a very, Milford is a very transient community, up and down 95, up and down the Route 1 corridor. These body cams that every single officer wears when they interact with the public, provide translation, real-time translation, in just about any language, and so we can have these real-time conversations, very important. It also provides a trouble alert where officers can now, and some of the advancements by pushing the button can alert headquarters, other staff, other command, I'm in trouble, maybe you're rolling around on the ground and you can't get to your radio, and that's, these are significant advancements. It also has a report writing assistant that allows us to, as the information's collected in our conversation, to take that information and use that to help write police reports. An AI assistant is something new this product has, similar to when you say, hey, Google, or Alexa, or whatever you folks use, and it provides information on policies and statutes and whatnot, a real game changer in the improvements in its technology, again, mandated by law, every police officer has to have those, and they have to have them on during any interaction with the public. Dash cams, those are your car cams, there's a camera in front and a camera in back, once again, mandated by statute, every cruiser that responds to calls has to have those, those also provide alerts, those are, also provide real-time streaming, body cams provide real-time streaming, and dash cams provide real-time streaming, so when an officer shows up to something critical, command can watch that, we can watch that, the supervisors can see that, all officers can see that, as to what that officer sees on his or her camera, remind me to put that back on, excuse me. The same thing with the cruisers, and those are just some advanced technologies. In addition to the cameras, we also have to replace all the modems and all the other peripherals that are in the cars. The next item, the interview room video systems, again, you'll see the asterisk required by state statute, that when we interview somebody or interrogate somebody for a felony, that has to be recorded, sight and sound, and we've got to have recording devices in any room that we use. Those cameras, those systems need to be replaced, that's also included in this contract. All the training for all those systems that we just talked about is included, also included is tasers, the tasers are five-year plans, the new taser, the new taser 10, it'll be the upgraded model, along with that will come holsters, a training simulating system because officers have to be trained on these and they have to recertify in these, it also provides all the training supplies. We use about 250 to 300 cartridges, which gets very expensive just for recertification every year, those are also included. Evidence.com, the cloud storage, all these systems and more are stored on the cloud server, Evidence.com, I'm sure you've probably heard about it, it allows us, it not just provides all the storage, it also provides the backend that allows us to catalog all those videos in a number of different ways, it's reason they're cataloged, there's some are evidence, some are used for complaints, some are used for a number of different things, and we can have an entire conversation on, on the different areas where they're cataloged. Evidence.com does that, and it places it into small bits and small files, allowing the officer to catalog, it also provides a deletion schedule, it also provides for dissemination, for FOIA requests, which we, which are voluminous, the number of requests we get, the days of having to, if you get 40 hours of video requested, somebody would normally have to sit there and watch 40 hours to look for objectional material, material is exempt under the statute, they have an AI assistant that can do that, and it provides that redaction, very important. BWC, dash cam, drone, interview rooms and other video evidence is all stored under that same ecosystem, that software, additional software, FUSES, I mentioned to you that the body worn cameras in a dash cam can stream real video, the FUSES system allows us to see where every car is, where every officer is, and allows us just with a click of a mouse to watch that video in live, livestream that video. I mean, to think about that for a second, when an officer goes through a critical incident or an officer's in trouble at a traffic stop, we can not only see what the car sees, we can also see what the officers see. These are, and I hate to use, overuse the word game changer, but they really are, that's something we didn't have in the previous version, we had in the most recent version, but not the one prior to that. We also have the Live 911 Dispatch, which is something that we haven't started to use yet, they're just, they're getting ready to install it. What Live 911 Dispatch is, when you dial 911, a call comes in, a call taker takes it, and they go through certain protocols and ask you certain questions, and they type that information in, look for the available units and send a unit. This is real time, when that call taker picks up that call, Live 911 Dispatch, well, that call is streamed, the location of that call is streamed, the information is streamed, we can start, have, units can start heading out there, prior to the call even being dispatched. When we're talking about dispatching, we're talking about response time, seconds and certainly minutes matter. And again, it also has AI search capability that have really made things much more streamlined and much more efficient. And maintenance and support, all the maintenance, all the support, including replacement and updates, is included here. If I give you, for instance, on support costs, and we know how expensive those are, our CAD, our MS software, that's, those costs are $240,000 a year, it's always in the operating budget, and that goes up every year. All that is built right in, what's nice about dealing with a single vendor, the same ecosystem is, we either, they either replace it, or they repair it. I don't know if you wanted me to continue, that, that was the contract in a nutshell?
This, Chief, through Chairman, through you, Chief, this has been reviewed also, you've had discussions with the IT manager, Adam Heller, on any of this, or this is totally standalone system?
These are totally standalone systems, it's managed by, by Axon, it's web-based, it's an ecosystem that, that is contained at headquarters, there's no reason for it to be at MIS, they have no role in that. I mean, if they want to put it in their budget, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but other than that, thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, to the chief, I just have two questions, like, the onsite translator, is that a real, puts you in contact with a real person, or is like through AI?
No, it's an AI tool.
Okay.
Similar to what you might use on your phone, if you can go on your phone and you can go through AI and use a translator and you speak, and it, you can show the other person, so it's, it's machine generated.
And similarly, like, to, like, going through the, you know, FOIA requests, and, you know, do you have, AI to help you, for you, you know, to see whether, what needs are rejected in anything else, but I assume that will be not, but like, if you, before it gets to out to people, disclosed, you have somebody checking you out and seeing, make sure the AI got it right, I guess?
That, that's correct, there's still a real person at the end of that. What the AI does is, for instance, if I'm, if we were sitting here today and we had body cams on and somebody said, we want your body cam, because we want to see what, what Keith Mello said to the Alderman, it's not going, it's going to take all that dead space, and it's going to, it's going to look for me, and it's going to look for you, and it's going to take that and say, okay, this is, all you need to do is watch this, and so you get to the pertinent parts. Think, for instance, if you had a security camera in your yard, and you had, you had a break-in, you don't want to have to look through every piece of video, you want those alerts, right, those are machine generated, and so that's what it does, you know, it doesn't have the benefit of, of a, of a sensor that says, okay, somebody moved, it goes and it looks for that movement, and says, okay, this is all you need to look at, and then we redact those exempt material.
So if you have like a, like you breached a house, not breached a house, but you have the, you know, go down a house, and, you know, you see somebody, like, personal information, it will be rejected, and that's, that's through AI and, you know, everything else?
Right.
Okay, and you have like a retention policy, how, how long is your retention policy?
So, there's a couple ways to answer that, when you look at body cams and dash cams and interview rooms, there's, there's a couple things that play here in regards to retention, there's the records of retention for the state, and then there's state law, and then there's mandated policy that's been a product of the law, and so there's some differences in there, so we keep, and it's all the same for everyone, there is one policy, you can't deviate, which you can make it more restrictive, 90 days for everything, and then there's other types of retention schedules, for instance, if it's a civil case, it survives to the, past the four years, whether, just to make sure that it wasn't any intent to sue, and then if there is a case, it's retained for that case, and then 90 days after that, same thing with criminal cases. Every officer goes in and looks at every video and puts a catalog on that video that talk about how long it's going to be retained. If for some reason, an officer does something and he or she feels, hey, I might get a complaint, I want to store this, he or she can say, I want to store this until, to make sure that there isn't a complaint, so we may keep that longer, but there is a retention schedule, the minimum retention is 90 days for everything.
And then it's normally erased, or just is purged, I guess?
It's, it's erased, the data's stored on the, on the cloud, but it's our data, and so we set up that retention schedule, it's set up based upon the law and based upon those catalogs, those criteria that I just mentioned, and then it automatically deletes, in fact, the system itself will notify, even, I even get it, all the pertinent players to say, we're going to delete your video in this date, make sure, if you want to keep it, that you catalog it, so it's, there's a lot of checks and balances in that piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Healy.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Chief Mello, thank you for staying on top of sunsetting this particular contract and being out ahead of the curve six months prior to in negotiating a very favorable contract as you've presented to get us financial incentives, so we appreciate that, and your senior staff. My question would be through the Chairman to the Finance Director, on this particular contract with the total sum, and, and in part of what we talked about before with the Samara contract, is there an opportunity to issue a general obligation bond for the total aggregate sum, since these contracts, we've got six months to plan for this, and then that would be more advantageous for the city relative to having these, you know, funded, to make sure these essential services continue to operate efficiently and effectively over the long term, and that they do provide activities that are cost beneficial to the good welfare of city operations, is there an opportunity to do that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Healy, yes, there would be an opportunity to issue a general obligation bond to cover this cost or a portion of this cost.
Thank you, so you would take that into consideration if this item is approved along with what we did approve for the Samara contract also, and incorporate those possibly into a general obligation bond for funding?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy, yes, I would imagine the city administration should or would take it under consideration. Yes, I would imagine the city administration should or would take it under consideration. I would note that technically, the system and the cost should be, or should have been, if not already, included in the city's annual capital improvement plan that is approved by planning and zoning and the Board of Alderman this year, because normally, our bonded projects need to be in that document, and approved in that document. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration of that, and we'll work with the Chief and the Director of Public Works, talk further on that with the new administration. Thank you.
Alderman Selly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Chief Mello. So this program, the most recent version before the renewal, was funded through the ARPA funds, so, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So this was not an item where we're looking at an increase to the city? It's actually the entirety of it is now going to be a cost to the city, where before it was not?
That's correct. Normally, it would be the annual cost, but they decided to do it all.
Right. What would happen if this was not approved?
Well, those three items I mentioned are mandated by law. They have to be. There's not an option. In terms of, in terms of the technology, we have to have those, right? So there isn't an option.
Right, so we, this is something we need to do. This is the most favorable pricing we can get. There's, this is the leading provider, as you noted, as far as almost every municipality using this particular vendor, and this is, this is just what it is?
They're the leading provider, not just in the state, but in the country, and even globally. We've been working on negotiating this contract for about a year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I want to ask you about this reference in here to the Federal Bureau of Investigation's Criminal Justice Information System. Is the data that's collected from these cameras shared or stored with the Federal Bureau of Investigation's Criminal Justice Information System?
Well, it's stored on the, either the Microsoft Azure, or the AWS government cloud, the same cloud, state, local, federal government, same cloud DOD uses and DOJ. But because it's government, and because it's particularly law enforcement, it's got to adhere to CGIS compliant, to CGIS policies, and that's the program that you mentioned. I would have brought the document, but it's actually 455 pages. But it is robust, and it is the best that we have. You know, I actually, anticipation, whoops, that's, those are the compliance certifications that Axon has. You know, the benefit of dealing with a company that has a $55 million market cap, is they can put and invest in security that we certainly couldn't do at our level. I mean, I wouldn't want to put anything on that laptop. And so to, and you'll notice too, there's some, there's a SOC 2 and SOC 3 where there's third-party compliance reports as well. You can go on Axon Trust Center, and you can read those documents. They're large, but I'm very comfortable. You know, we don't deal in possibilities, we deal in probabilities. And the probability of somebody trying to access Milford's data, to get through that kind of data breach, would certainly take a lot. And remember, the data that we're talking about, most of it's public information anyways, with certain exemptions on the statute. And I put that up there for you as well. It is our data. We control the risk, so we determine who can see it and who can't. Nobody can go in and look at our data unless we give them access to that. So, for instance, if, when the court needs it, the court has an account. We allow the court to see not everything, only those cases that are of a criminal nature that are likely going to appear in front of them. If a department wants something, or if the public wants it, we will open up access to certain files, but we control all that.
And what is the involvement of the National Crime Information Center?
NCIC. So the National Crime Information Center is, that's controlled by the FBI. That's where all your criminal information is, like your criminal history. If you were arrested, the public can't see that, only we can see that. We can see if you're incarcerated, we can see if there's a warrant for you, we can see if there's a stolen car. It is the framework of everything that we do, right? When someone says they're going to run a name or run your background, it's all through NCIC. Stolen properties in there, recovered property. There's an abundance of information in there that officers have to go through training, and they've got to sign, they have to, they have to sign an understanding. If they violate that, if they share any of this information, they'll be arrested, and they'll be terminated. And you can, once in a while, if you Google that, you can see that. It's of the strictest security, and only certain folks have access to that. I can't share that with the mayor. If the mayor asks me, I can't give you that if it's protected information. That's a sensitive it is.
And a moment ago, you were talking about retention policy. At the end of our retention policy timelines, the information is deleted, as I understood your discussion. Is it also deleted from the Federal Bureau of Investigation's Criminal Justice Information System, and from the National Crime Information Center?
They don't have that. That's our data. The data that they have is their data. It's data that we contribute. We contribute, corrections contributes to it, court contributes to it, police departments contribute to that. It's all criminal justice history information. So they don't, they don't have this data. Who would have this data? Likely the court, if there was an arrest. If there was discovery, defense would have that. What the defense does with it, I don't know, but we're responsible for our data, and we delete our data when the records of retention directs us to do that.
And you mentioned there, you know, third parties, and I heard you say third-party compliance reports? What third parties would have access to this, and what kind of compliance reports are they giving us?
No, I, it's not our data that they have, it's to make sure that the companies, under those compliance, the companies that are dealing with criminal justice information systems, that are adhering to the CGIS policy, that there has to be audits to make sure their employees are fingerprinted, their employees went through the training, and that their employees aren't violating their policy, and make sure they're not doing anything with the data they should, in the same way, we make sure that our employees don't do anything with the data.
All right, and is this, is this contract going out to RFP?
No, this is a renewal of an existing contract, which is a renewal of a prior contract. We've been, we have Axon Infrastructure since 2012. We were the first ones in the state to use body cams when it was stuck on your glasses, and there was a big wire, and everyone thought, you know, why would you want to record yourselves? It has since become mandated for everyone, but we have been in business with Axon. We've looked at other products. I know what those products are. I've been involved in this very closely, and for many years, and I've written the state policy, and helped with the legislation. I know what's out there. There's nothing that can do what Axon can do. And one of the things, the beauties of Axon is when, if I pull a taser, and I forget to turn my body cam on, which is critical, if I use that kind of force and can't record it, it's a violation of the law. My camera will go on, his camera will go on, and his camera will go on, and all those cars will go on. That ecosystem's important. Nobody else can do those things. So we have leverage now. To go off RFP would make no sense. We would lose our leverage, we would, we would realize some increased pricing for the new year, and we're going to be in the same place. I know what the products are, and this is far superior, and most importantly, it is just a renewal that we've had for years. So we have the infrastructure in place. I wouldn't want to see that changed. And actually, we would have to go à la carte, because nobody can, has that ecosystem that this company has.
And I notice in here, it says that the major components will be salvaged for auction by the agency. What components get auctioned? And the agency is our department, so you guys are going to be auctioning them off?
Those are body cams, those are dash cams, those are the old modems, the old cable link, the old tasers, holsters, all that stuff. I don't know what we'll do with them. I would prefer that Axon just take them off our hands, because we can't give those to the public. So I'll check with Axon and see if they'll take them off our hands, but other than that, I guess they'd have to be destroyed.
So you're not planning on holding an auction?
I'm not planning on holding an auction, no. You know, I know they deal with commercial products as well, and maybe that has some resale, but, or maybe they sell them to third, you know, other countries, excuse me, but I prefer they just be destroyed.
And how long do these components last? The body cams, the dash cams, the taser, how long, what's the life expectancy of any piece of that equipment?
So they last for a while. This contract gives us two cycles of cameras, because Axon's always improving their optics, and always improving, you know, the software that runs these things, and battery life. So two and a half years later, they'll give us their most updated product. They probably would last. We break them, we lose them, you know, they fall, they get smashed, and they replace them and they repair them. So the tasers that we have are very old, and in need of replacement, but we wait, so we hold on to those tasers five years. The ones that don't last, they replace them.
Five years, I heard you say, something like that?
Yeah, Joe, five years? We got five years out of a taser? Okay, good.
And how about the body cam?
Well, we just, every two years, they replace them. Batteries start to die, the technology changes. So we're fine with body cams. You know, they, we always get the new model, and we're happy with that. They're different, the sizes are different, the mounts are different when they update.
All right, thank you, Chief. In the timeframes, I heard there are about two years and five years. I heard some discussion here about using bonding money to pay for these things. I hope whoever's doing that consideration, you know, bonding money, 15-year bonds, 20-year bonds, usually, in my estimation, we ought to be buying products and goods that last the 15 or 20 years, last the life of the bond, not bonding 15- or 20-year bonds for things that last two and five years. So I hope that whoever's giving that consideration will weigh, I don't think these are appropriate items for bonding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Chief Mello. Thanks for the presentation, very clear. I just have a couple questions. I'm looking at the delivery schedule.
I'm sorry, you're looking at the what schedule?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, what you just said.
Oh, I'm looking at the delivery schedule?
Yes, okay.
So it looks like there's a, we get a lot of the hardware upfront in the first year of the contract? Is that right?
We, so this, even though the contract will be effective on July 1st, if we sign it, they'll start, there'll be a transition period, and they'll start delivering some of that stuff in, like, probably June, I think, is when they start delivering that. The software will come on or about the same time.
Okay.
There's a secondary delivery schedule for the interview rooms.
That's what's my second question.
Yeah, there's a second, there's a secondary schedule on that, and there, I'd have to look and see what else may be secondary. And there's a two-and-a-half-year schedule, cycle for the body cam, so there'll be a second delivery cycle on body cams.
Okay. All right, and can you talk a little bit about the interview room? What's different about it?
Sure, so, anytime we have, we interview somebody in a room, we're required by law, whenever we're talking about a felony, that there are cameras of sight and sound. So there'll be two cameras in a room, and there'll be mics in a room, and that that information, that conversation is then downloaded into the cloud, and becomes part of the file, the same way the body cam, and the dash cam, and whatever evidence we collected, it all gets put in that file, and it's used normally for court.
Okay. And how long do those interview room cameras typically last?
Three years.
Okay. All right, thank you. If I may have a question for the Finance Director, or for you. In the budget book for our current year's budget, I see a line under the police department that says, "Software and maintenance, $467,000." Is that related to this, or something else?
That's, that's, those are just the fixed maintenance costs for all the software services that we have. For instance, what I referenced earlier, the CAT RMS software, that is a 240, I have to look, I think it's the same, $240,000 goes for that. So there's a list of what those fixed costs are. This is not part of that.
Okay, so, so this is above and beyond that?
This is above and beyond that.
Okay. Was there anything in this budget related to Axon?
I can answer that. The modems will come out of there. Those won't be in there anymore. There's about, in that budget alone, there's, you're talking about the current budget that we're?
Current, yeah.
Modems, I think, are in there. I'd have to recall what's in there. Is there a $28,000 line item for modems? I believe there is. We won't spend that, because we're buying modems. We were able to get modems through them, that was one of the things we were able to negotiate. That'll come out, and there's, there's $61,000 that wasn't in that budget, we took it out of a different account, and that paid for some of the dash cam à la carte, because we added some new cars and some new dash cams. That, that $61,000, that $28,000, and there's some additional costs as well, you won't see in this budget that you would have seen, and that, that's about, total about $200,000 less, that would have been in this budget, had we not signed this contract. The modems or something was an afterthought, where we realized that we could get those built into this, so we did. That's why we didn't, we won't buy them.
Okay, so there's $200,000 in this budget?
No, there'd be $200,000 that would have been in the budget that I'm going to be submitting.
Okay.
In that budget, you know, there's, you'll likely see, again, the $61,000 that we paid for, we paid for using a different, I believe it was private duty funds, or it might have been seized asset funds, because we didn't bond for that, and, excuse me, we didn't budget for that in that, this budget. The $28,000 for modems, I believe, is a line item, that won't be spent this year, and that's it.
Okay, okay, so this will be an increase to the budget for next year, depending on how it's determined that we're going to fund it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, very clear.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for answering all our questions. The next item on the agenda is new business, not on the agenda? Isn't any of that? Agenda item number 10, budget memo transfers? There's none of that. Agenda item number 11, refunds list. Alderman Selly.
Agenda item 11A, consideration of refunds in the amount of $26,135.89.
Motion is made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Selly.
Agenda item 11B, suspense list in the amount of $318,980.82.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This might be best to the Finance Director. What exactly does this suspense list do? What does it represent?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. What it represents basically is a portion of outstanding taxes that the tax collector has deemed as uncollectible. One common reason, for example, is property that has been abandoned, is one reason. And it's required, as you see in the letter from the tax collector by statute, to be presented to the Board annually, and it doesn't mean that we don't continue to try to collect the debt if possible. One of our, we have different methods, but one of our methods of last resort is to turn it over to a tax collection agency, to try to go after it further. But there's, there's always a chance, especially with abandoned property, that some of the amount may remain uncollectible. Thank you.
Chairman. And a follow-up, I have a couple of follow-ups for the Finance Director, I think. What is it, it seems self-explanatory, but it says, "Unknown whereabouts." I see that a lot in there. Does that mean that the mail has come back from the tax, what does that mean?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. Yes, that could be one reason where the property owner can't be located. Mail has come back returned, we use various databases to try to locate the owner, that comes back unsuccessful. So that, those are some of the reasons.
And, so I see on here, there's a half a dozen, or eight entries for my old friend, Brian Collegian, and says whereabouts, is this the Brian Collegian that's on the zoning board? I know where he is twice a month. I know where he is twice a month.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith. If, yes, if you have information, please feel free to present it to Corey Gumbrewitz and we'd like, we would look into it. Thank you.
I'm just curious, okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Can you just tell us how this suspense list has been trending? Is this higher, this figure of 300 and, where is it? 318 is compared to last year or?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Beatty. I do recall a similar type question in, in the past, unfortunately, off the top of my head, I don't remember.
That's why I didn't ask you. I said, is it trending? No, not even that, no.
No, I, I don't, I don't think so. I think, I, my educated guess is that it's in the same ballpark, it doesn't fluctuate dramatically. Thank you.
It might be a certain percentage of properties, almost a convention, and so it'd stay the same.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Paselli. I'm sorry, report of standing committees, is there any standing committee reports? Yes, Alderman Beatty.
I don't have a standing committee, but I would like to make a few remarks and we thought it might be here, that they would be made.
You have a standing committee report?
No.
Well, then we're going to go on to the next. Is there any standing committee reports? There isn't any. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 13, reports with special committees. Is there any special committee reports? I don't see any of those. So before we go into adjournment, does any Alderman have anything to say before we adjourn? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, at least I'm in the right place. I wanted to say thank you to Jason Jenkins and Scott Marlowe and to Ray Vitale on your retirement from this board as well, and I have learned something from each of you. In particular, I was thinking, Alderman Vitale, sometimes we disagree, but I'm eternally grateful. You were the principal of Live Oak School and I had three sons who went through there and received a good education, so I am eternally grateful for that. But I would like to say, and if you'll indulge me, that Ed and I are not going anywhere, we're not moving, but we were reflecting in this last week or two about Milford and I'd like to say besides the, I came here from New York City, I chased after a fireman and wound up here. I'm here 42 years, so that makes me a newcomer. But one of the things I wanted to do, and it explains my service on the Board of Alderman is to help improve education, and I think that has been done in the 40 years, certainly they are to be commended for what they did, and it's not just monies, although that helped, so I was pleased to be a part of that. But one thing that's not mentioned when we talk about the wonderful little city with the big heart and all the many good things, Ed and I in particular have had great success with scouting and there's such a strong scouting movement in this town that isn't often mentioned, so I just wanted to put in a plug that that has been a major satisfaction for us and I think it's a community that really adds to likewise the sports. And our three sons played sports, soccer in particular in college, and it was from Milford United Soccer behind Christ the Redeemer Church years ago with volunteers. So every time there's a sports event, celebration and award that comes before us, it does our heart good on a, on a bad day and that sports community is to be paid attention to. And I also would like to say I've learned much being on this board, much from interactions with, the police chief isn't here, but the department heads, particularly Public Works, Fire and Police, and that has enhanced my, myself, my learning. So thank you and thank you to each and every one of my colleagues. I consider you friends, I hope you consider me as a friend, and I was very touched tonight in leaving you to your good work. Thank you.
Is there any other Alderman? Alderman Scott Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I as well would like to thank everyone, since my wife told me to write out my thoughts, so I did that. She said, "Don't wing it." So since this is my last meeting, I, I would like to say thank you. I entered serving in local government in 1989 when I joined the Milford Republican Town Committee. From there, I was appointed to fill a Board of Ed spot in 92. And then the first time my name was on the ballot was when I won my first election to the Board of Ed in 93. And over the past 33 years, I've had the privilege to serve on, I think, every elected board. Alderman Board of Ed, Planning and Zoning, and I was the chairman of Planning and Zoning for a time as well. And I've also served on a few appointments, I was on the Finance Board under two administrations as well as inland wetlands. I wanted to thank, first of all, the MRTC, the Town Committee, for endorsing and supporting me all these years, and I'd also like to thank, and even though there's no residents here, I want to thank my neighbors and the residents from the 5th and the 2nd Districts for having the confidence in me and showing me their trust, their trust in me with their votes throughout the years. I've worked along many wonderful, and that's all you guys, as well as the other boards, caring and dedicated people, and I thank them for their role in working to keep Milford the special place that it is. And I also want to save the best for last, even though my wife was here, but she left, she said, "Ah, shit, it's too long." I want to thank my wife Joyce and my family because when I began all those years ago, we were only in our early 30s with four young children and my family gave me the love and constant support to continue year after year to serve, give back to others and just to, to our city. Milford is a great city filled with dedicated people who volunteer their time to serve. My congratulations to all who won this past Tuesday. I'm going to ask, please, to continue to grow and come together as a community. I would encourage all, whether elected or appointed, to put personalities and politics aside whenever possible, work together as best you can and allow Milford to be the best city to live in for everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Marlowe. Is there any other Alderman would like to? Yes, Alderman Casey.
I didn't write any remarks, so I'm going to wing it, I guess, but I, I just, I just want to add to Alderman Beatty, you always like as an independent and you always stuck to cheapen the city as transparent as possible, even though you, you know, the same party, you just keep the feet to the fire, so that's really important, so I appreciate the, your constant vigilance about that. And, you know, Scott Marlowe, Alderman Scott Marlowe, you are always the justest, judicious voice of reason and, you know, it will be missed. I appreciate your, your, you know, conversations and your voice of reason and, you know, Alderman like Jenkins, that you're, you're the, you know, you're the brains of the, you always ask such key questions and always thoughtful and Alderman Vitale is like, if a board will not be the same without you because like you embody community service, like, you know, present to your teacher and throughout the principal and I don't know how, I, I, it's kind of hard to imagine a board without you. And so I appreciate that and I know that I, you know, I will say reserve my comments of Tony because like, you know, he had to be, he had to leave, but I appreciate, you know, Tony, I served with Tony and he, you know, he, you know, I shouldn't say he was brought me under a wing, but, you know, it's kind of true, but, you know, he, you know, he kept me level headed and I, I'm appreciative of his, his, you know, his work and, you know, I used to sit next to him on the Board of Alderman and I kind of missed when he became mayor because I, you know, I no longer had a seat mate with next to me and we always talked about, you know, that when, when going out with the details of the, you know, agenda, we always bountiful ideas and so I'll miss that and, you know, I, I miss the, his, as mayor, but, you know, the benefit is like we, you know, I knew Rich Smith too, so I, I, you know, that's the, hopefully the echoing Alderman Marlowe, we shouldn't see personalities, but we should see what's good, be essential to the Milford. So I appreciate it and also like, I know, like, you know, Mr. Aldacy and like Mr. Bertram, I appreciate your work and, you know, I've been, always been there, so, and also the chairman and I appreciate that all things, but, so I just leave that, that, so I appreciate the board and, you know, I know it's hard to, sometimes we don't agree, but I, we, hopefully we can serve the best interest of the city of Milford.
Thank you, Alderman Casey. Is there any other? Yes, Alderman Jenkins.
I will keep this brief. I want to say thank you to everyone on this board, everyone who works for the city of Milford, all of our directors. Though this is my first and only term, I have sincerely enjoyed this, I've enjoyed the hard work, I've enjoyed the challenges, I've enjoyed some of the battles, some of them not so much, but I, I think that the best thing that we have going in Milford is that our individuals who are elected to represent this city continue to have what is best for this city at heart. And we may not, as Mr. Cotton said, I thought he put it very, very eloquently, we may not all agree on policies, but we all agree that we have a place to get to in Milford that is pretty similar, it is to make Milford a better place. Ellen, I wish you very well on, on everything that you do from this point forward. Scott, to you as well, it's been a pleasure working with you. Ray, I would, I would be remiss if I did not recognize Ray was my principal when, when I was in grade school, as well as Andy's principal, as well as Tony's principal, as well as Justin Rosen's principal. And I think that that is a huge testament to the tutelage that, that he has, not only sitting on this board, but as a, as a developer of minds who have given back to the city. I'm stepping down for personal reasons, that my wife and I decided we're in our best interests, but just because I won't be sitting on this board, I'm not going anywhere and if I can be of assistance in any way, shape or form to anyone here or in the city, my phone number is always available. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Jenkins. Is there anyone else like to? Alderman Vitale, absolutely.
Thank you. It's been a long road. As, as other people have said, we've had our differences. I congratulate all of you who won the election, who will be continuing to serve Milford and thank you for all of you, to all of you who have served in the past. And Ellen, you've got some great guys there at home. It was a pleasure working with you, again, as a parent at Live Oak School. Phil, thank you for your leadership in the whole board. Scott, I think you have led the Republican contingency well and thank you for all your At times it got contentious and I, I hope we leave and I'll note that we can maybe build a little confidence in each other, in a little more respect, and I don't mean basically on this board, but community-wise, nationwide, in, in, in what is best for Milford was always my intent. I spent 44 years in education in this city, nowhere else but this city. I was 18 years on the board. Not only was Jason, Andy, Justin, John was central grammar, middle side, the Live Oaks and Harborside Middle School, and Tony was also a student. So it's priceless to be at this point in time where you see that you maybe touched the lives of many different people. 10,000 people, 10,000 kids, more, you know? I started at Orange Avenue, I ended up at, at Harborside Middle School for the two years, my last two years in '07. It was a pleasure working with kids. The pleasure was always the community. We're parents, I think it's a little different this time around and in this landscape, it's more difficult, but my work with MPC, with Bridges, creating folks on spokes, which will be our 35th year next year in our bike ride, probably the longest bike ride in the state and I'm very proud of that. My work with United Way, I think the success that I hope had given the city and many of the guys and gals that, you know, sit on the board and my students, former students, gives me a great pleasure to think back and give me great memories. So I thank each and every one of you for your thoughts, for your expertise, and we all had something to give and I am very proud of that and I'm very proud to have worked with the board this year and for the last 18 years, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Phil. You know, as this, as this session, I guess we'll call it winds down, one thing is, is very apparent to me, especially even comparing it to my, my prior term, not to minimize one group versus another, but this was a very hard working group. Everyone here, I think, worked very hard towards doing what each person thought and believes is best for the city. I, I commend everyone for that, although we've had many disagreements along the way. I think the work, the hard work and the goodwill is, is something that should be recognized. And for those of you who won't be here with us in the next term, certainly want to recognize the unique contributions that, that each of you have made and certainly I want to just call out Scott specifically as minority leader. You and I have had many conversations and opportunities to bridge the divide at times and certainly want to recognize those, those, those moments. And then lastly, Ellen, much has been said about you today and all of it is true. And, you know, just want to thank you and let you know that your, your wisdom and your guidance and your presence at these meetings and at all the events that we, we deal with will be missed, will be missed dearly. So I just wanted to keep it brief and thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Paselli. Any more Aldermen would like to have a, have to say?
A quick comment.
Yeah, Alderman Marlowe.
Not, not in relation to that, I just would ask all the people to keep Mayor Giudantazio in prayer because his dad just passed away, so that's why they, so if everyone would just keep that in prayer. Thank you.
I just want to thank our Madam Secretary for putting up with us all these months, for the last two years and congratulations to Mr. Peter Smith, winning the election and taking over, taking over his job as city clerk, done a swell job there. Always have compliments, always had a compliment to Peter Iertici for keeping the city on its, on its righteous move and, and also our city attorney for putting up with, answering 8 million billion questions that are always come up at every meeting. And each and every one of you Aldermen have taught me a lot. It's easy for me to learn from, from. It's easy for me to learn from, from my competitors and from fellow Aldermen, so wish you all the luck in your future endeavors, and the rest of you, I guess I'm going to be seeing you next, next session. So anybody else have anything to say? We'll ask for, we want to, anybody want to make a, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. A motion to adjourn and a second, and all in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.